I want to thank everybody again for coming back up to see us and this is our second session of the New York State Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative. I'd like to welcome anyone in everyone. And before we begin, I just want to say a special thank you to Chief Watson, Lieutenant Phillips, and also Sergeant over there in the corner because it's just not possible without them and the program they put together is just outstanding and I want to thank them again on behalf of the town board. So also very attending and he was so.
Thank you. I want to thank all the stakeholders for attending again. Appreciate you taking time out of your days to come here. We're going to go ahead and get right into continuing the Sliso presentation that we have. And Lieutenant Phillips to my left, Bruce to my right. Anytime anybody has any questions, please feel free to stop, sign in, and we'll try to get through it rather quickly. I do want to apologize for last week's meeting. It ran a little bit lengthy and we're going to try to see if we can speed this one along because I don't want to take up any more time. We've gotten to the section on defund the police. You probably have heard a lot of this come recently out in the public. You've probably heard a lot of it from the press. So what we'd like to bring up is several things. First is that it's known that there's a misunderstanding that the movement is designed to abolish police departments by stripping them of all their funding. Police departments serve a valuable purpose in deterring crime, preventing violence in the community. The reality is, police departments were removed, the communities where the voices for defunding are currently the loudest would suffer the most severe consequences in regards to increased violence and other criminal activity. All residents within a community suffer from violence, persist because, in quotes, "bullets have no names." Continuing with the defunding of police, police administrators have expressed frustration with police officers having to be forced to take on roles that fall well outside responsibilities expected of them by the communities. This leads to a strain on police resources and the inability to address those issues that require actual police involvement. Careful real allocation of financial resources within a community to address these alternatives needs, need, I'm sorry, address the needs of the alternative needs is a great option and would be supported by most police officers. Rash decision making and irresponsible eradication of funding would only make the situation worse for those who require the assistance. There's a quote from Chief David Brown. It says, "Every societal failure, we put it off on the cops to solve. Policing was never meant to solve these problems."
Yeah, a lot of that has to do with, did everybody remember Mr. Brown? David Brown? He was the chief of Dallas Police Department and he was chief when the shootings of the six police officers went down. He handled it very well and I think he's, if I'm not mistaken, he had since retired and I think he's the superintendent of Chicago right now, if I'm not mistaken. But it's true. Unfortunately, society and today's everlasting life, where they bring you throughout the United States of America, cops, the old sign that, you know, when you call a cop, you call him a preacher, you call him a social worker, you're calling somebody to solve your problem. As I stated last week, nobody calls the police ever on a good day just to ask how they're doing. It's always when there's a problem. And if it does, it becomes very stressful on police resources, especially in towns like ours where, you know, you get a mental health call, obviously two guys have to go to that at once or, you know, two girls, whoever it may be, and they're tied up. They're tied up until that gets resolved. And usually we try to call different resources and unfortunately, for whatever reason it may be, sometimes those other resources are not available because it's not two o'clock in the afternoon on Monday through Friday. So it falls on us to try to resolve it. And we'll get into more of that in the future. I just wanted to give you a little background on who that was. Again, these are some of the different people that we have for the mental health in Orange County. You have the Mental Health Association of Orange County, Access to Sports Living, Mental Health Issues, and then Orange County Crisis Call Center, Hope Starts Here. Mental health system in New York State is a prime example of the dangerous consequences of sort of careless defunding on a community resource. In the eighties and nineties, hundreds of mental health institutions were closed, forcing their residents out to the streets in their communities. Homelessness, criminal activity, other social issues skyrocketing, placing a substantial burden on public police departments to address these needs. Everybody remembers how New York City used to be, especially those that used to work there in the mid-eighties, early nineties. Police officers are not equipped to deal with these issues. We are not social workers. We are not counselors or therapists. Police officers are not psychologists trained in identifying basic mental health issues. In response to overwhelming demand, police agencies have begun with drug and monsters and crisis intervention training. And that is part of the police academy nowadays. It used to be when I first got on, you learned how to deal with that stuff from the older police officers who learned from older police officers who are just on the job training. Now in the academy, you do get certain sections on police mental health and they also have the crisis intervention training, which we have a couple officers that we have sent to that for that reason as well. Handling mental health calls subjects an officer to department's significant liability. Typical mental health calls require at least two police officers, like I stated. On average, each mental health call takes forty-five minutes. Some take several hours due to the complexities associated with response and evaluation of the subject. Many incidents also result in force being necessary to take a subject into custody, significantly increasing the risk of injury to police officers and the mental health patients. Officers attempt to utilize available resources like Woodbury Voluntary Ambulance Core, Mobile Life, Mobile Mental Health. Officers ultimately end up transporting subjects to a hospital or other treatment facility where the subject is typically triaged, released to a limited treatment options. In bed space, officers must then complete detailed reports or paperwork or take additional time. When we respond to a mental health call, we, the only way that we can get them to go to a hospital if they're not willing is we have to place them under arrest. And we have to make that decision under the mental health law called 9.41, that we have to physically take them into custody. And then that's the burden upon us, transporting to the hospital. Now you have two people at least leaving the town and then when you get to the hospital, usually they can take them, depending on what it is, it's pretty quick. And then you require the signature of whoever's on duty at the hospital that you turn that patient over there. The problem, if we remember a year ago, I think a year ago today, we went into lockdown and COVID completely skyrocketed and they weren't letting anybody in the hospital. So now you're completely cutting your resource of where you can transport somebody in that type of situation. We have since, you know, we use mobile mental health when they're available, they can come out and do their thing, or they can take somebody into custody where we don't have to place them under arrest or take that initiative to do that. And sometimes, lucky enough, they understand the position that they're in, you can talk to them, use your crisis intervention skills, and have them agree to go on their own and then Woodbury ambulance can take them. The problem that you have there is if they realize halfway between where they're going and they come to like they don't want to be there, next thing you know, they're jumping out of the ambulance, they're in Chester, now it's Chester's problem. And it causes a huge problem for everybody. So when you're dealing with the mental health calls and especially with younger police officers, sometimes you run into that, again, liability issue. Are they making the right choices? Because once we get involved and if a wrong choice is made, well, now it's our problem because we decided to make that choice. And sometimes you do need a specialist to decide to make that choice if they haven't been on the job that long. And again, like anything else, liability is liability, especially in today's day and age. Woodbury Police Department has worked diligently with the mental health facilities and around Woodbury over the past several years in an effort to develop better response solution that takes into account the needs of mental health subjects, the police department, and the larger community as a whole. While these organizations want to commit to a solution, the responses have typically been, "We do not have the resources," mainly financially. That's a problem for anybody in New York State these days. We don't have the adequate staffing, totally understandable. We don't receive the training like you guys have in order to do that, or we don't feel safe, which again, those last two completely puts the burden back on us. And we're asking you to handle it, now you're coming into town and now you're asking us to go with you and then we ultimately are handling it anyway. So now there's four people at a spot when you only need two. The solution is always, no matter how you put it, call the police department. It's after hours, call the police department. As you can see in our mental health calls, these are the only calls that are documented that required an actual arrest. I couldn't give you the tally of all the calls that we have received for mental health. I can only document the ones that resulted in the arrest using the 9.41 statute of mental health law. Where in 2017, we had four calls, 2018, seven calls, 19, seven calls, and then 2020, we had five calls. But in 2020, the statistics that we came across were far, that much farther, or I should say that much greater because of what happened last year. It's just that we didn't have to make those arrests and a lot of people were home, so family was home, people that could counsel them, not just us, which made things a lot better. But our call volumes skyrocketed for mental health calls last year. It's just that we didn't really have a lot of arrests, which is a good thing, I guess, Anybody want to talk about that and ask your physicians on the whole defunding thing and the mental health and the social services?
Just a couple of thoughts or just a couple of conditions. And as a 9.41, you've got to make a decision, as you stated, whether to arrest them or not arrest them. That's it. And that's about them either danger to themselves or others. But when you involve EMS, there's only two dispositions for EMS. Either they're releasing them or they're taking them to the hospital or taking them to a E D. But as you stated, that's not necessarily the right resource for a mental health agency, which is why mental health programs like MHA and the emergency, Navrodt and so on are in need of funding and successful, but not to take away funding from police because police has their mission, EMS has their mission, mental health has their mission as well. And when you get the right resource involved, there'll be a better outcome because the whole point of these programs is to not take these patients to the emergency department. That just increases the stress levels, not decreases. It takes away the mental health emergencies. It's about giving them the right resource and appropriately disposing of that case.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
I'm going to add one thing to what you said. Everybody that assists us with regards to the mental health programs are probably some of the best people that I've ever seen. When Mobile Mental Health come, we've worked with them for years, excellent, and everybody really knows, they know their profession and they're excellent. The problem is, is I think the funding doesn't exactly what you said. We can't solve their problems. We're not psychologists, okay? And we're not, we can't give these people the care they need. Those people can, they can get them help. They are very grossly underfunded and that's what we need to change.
And what does that result in? It results in poor response times. And you can't have a police officer sitting on a scene for forty-five minutes, maybe at the least, waiting for a licensed social worker to come and help out with their case. That's a problem.
And like Lieutenant said, if you weren't, just to reiterate, there's never a good time for these things to happen. They always happen when your staff, if you will, is depleted for whatever reason, people take vacation. It just, it never happens in a perfect setting. So when you have to tie someone up for forty-five minutes or more and then further you have to, these people could transport. They could voluntarily go, voluntarily go, but a lot of times, the people that are transported only will be safe, not necessarily police officers in the vehicle with them, but they want the police officer behind them. So again, you're taking resources out of the town. So again, I couldn't say more good things about our mental health people, but, you know, they need financial help and someone needs to really put a priority on what they do because it seems like it's getting worse.
Lieutenant, you know, I think that every police officer in our town would much rather be someplace other than a need to be job.
That, yeah. And I think that our resources are still thin. And I think that we are at epidemic proportions with mental health. Thirty percent of the prison population has some form of mental defect and it seems to correlate with the population. Three hundred and thirty million citizens, we have ninety million people walking around that have some aspect of mental illness. I'm curious for you, are you concerned, because I am, for our officers, what happens if a mental health counselor goes to the scene? And now we have two victims, three victims, four victims.
Of course.
You know, I think, I think the state needs to really understand that at the point that the police department has called with a last resort.
Yeah.
You know, I'd rather march in parade in the fire department than go to a structure fire.
Of course.
So I mean, as we're speaking, so I think that, you know, the state has to jump in. It's not a police problem, it's a mental health problem. They made it all wrong.
Well, exactly. And I agree with you too, and I think a lot of that has to do with county-based resources about even possibly trying to get more money for salary for people to attract more workers to make it a more stable environment because a lot of the times, like anything else, they become training grads. They go there, work in the social workers, you know, they get their experience and then they leave and they get top-paying jobs, whereas trying to get the salaries up there where they can hold on to these people and take those programs and advance them. But the other thing too is, yes, I agree with you where we need to get social workers or mental health workers to the scene to vet these people. It needs to be done on a basis where it can be some type of joint effort because like you said, them going to a scene without us could possibly lead to a greater problem at the end.
I think that was the shooting in Queens last year, in North Philly in South Queens, where a woman showed up to the precinct and as she walked out, this is a strange precinct in the city. It's almost like a house. She walked up the driveway, she saw two officers, this is not a problem, I need to get some clothes and I need to leave my house. So they escorted her back, maybe there's some procedural issues, but they escorted her back. When they walked in the house with the victim, the husband was in a prone position and he fired the officers. They had no choice to respond to that request. My fear for the state is that if a social worker walked in, now I have that social worker I did with them, they probably had an suicide, of course. So now I have three victims instead of one. At a point that the police become liable, if we don't want to be there.
Then we have no choice then.
Yeah.
Yep.
So my stakeholders and members of the theater, you know, we don't want this to be a situation. You don't want this to be a situation.
It's not a good situation.
It's also not a good situation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But at what point do we try to figure this out where it does become a liability for the police department in town?
We all have.
Well, that's, they all have.
And then we have problems, you know?
So it becomes our problem.
Yeah.
And that comes our liability.
Yeah.
Comes our identification, comes our insurance.
Yes.
And that falls on us who don't want to do it.
Yeah.
Orange County is a step ahead of many other counties in the state because they have mental health close, you know, not unsent screening as well.
Yeah.
So that's more than most counties have.
Which is good, which is good. And those people do a great job, you know? But like you said, I mean, that's a whole other topic we could bring up. What you were just talking about with the whole indemnification, what New York State is trying to do to police officers about making them liable or not liable, carrying their own insurance. Who, in that situation that you just described, where the stakeholder was here at the table, who's going to want to even walk into that situation if I'm providing my own liability insurance because I don't want, that's what I'm saying.
I don't want my own social.
Yeah, yeah.
My theory to look at it is the number of actions that show us and people that realize understandable, now we're going to try to go all this and you all want to see. You really see the power volume that she had for mental health issues, like the numbers of my parents.
Yeah, yeah.
They had to, I first considered us because then they had to pause the train line.
Yeah.
Right. If they make all the money away for social services, what do you do? A lot of companies that have issues are, where you are present, if you, or the body comes in, or succeeds, I think seventy-five percent will call that and twenty-four percent, yes, unless it's not with it.
Yeah.
Unless they're dealing with it, yes, it takes time for you, your two officers to do that.
Yeah.
And that shows, if they really truly believe that you should not be taking all the money away and you should not respond to them, well, that's all, that's a metric, a little more radical, a little bit more of an outcome because social worker or front of the head walking in place, no authority here, I think there's more dangers. I think then you'll see the authority of the two police and it brings a lot.
I agree.
And he's there and he's going a hundred miles an hour, but I agree he's there.
I agree with you, but I also agree with you, Lieutenant. They already have a mental illness or mental issue going on. It's, it's no time, it's the opposite.
Exactly.
They see us. So it's a, it's a very fine line of where we have to go. It's, 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 listen, I would be able to, I would love if in our jurisdiction or within the county or whatever, we could roll to every mental health call and have somebody be able to respond as quick as we could and we could have a good, but we just, I don't believe, it's not up to us and there's, I just don't believe this funding and I don't think that the state recognizes at this point that stat. It becomes important when something bad happens. And then right away, just like anything else, the knee-jerk reaction is to criticize what we do. We're in a community that we basically respond just about to almost everything that everybody calls us for. It's just the nature of, New York City cops are, it's a different, it's a different area, it's a different, it's a different location. So they may not respond to some of the things we do. The reason why people live here is because, oh, we do, you know, we try to, we try to be responsive. I don't think there'll ever be a situation that will have a mental health call that we'd never be able to say, hey, let the whole mental health handle it, it's just, it's not there and.
That's not going to be important, my David said, that you're important, but these are the things that you said, you are not faithful, you're not counsel, you're not fit, but if you have to respond.
And to reiterate, exactly what Cliff said, most cops, if they had their choice, wouldn't respond to that, but unfortunately be active.
Chief, I want to ensure that the state realizes at some point that if our list of those indemnifications are prior, once you involve my police department, they have to cover us. If I'm on the last line of defense.
I agree, I agree. I think that if, that we think that everybody's trying to propose, okay, you want to make the police more responsible for their own actions, hey, you know what, if that's what you believe, that's what you believe, you're going to continue to have us respond to mental health issues and mental health calls? They're not a normal call. That's, that's, that's not a normal call. Sometimes our people are great, sometimes the mental health people come and sometimes we do a great job and there's a peaceful solution or resolution, but it only takes that one time. And then there's liability, the individual officers, municipality, the police department, and all that is, it takes no money. So yes, I agree, I think there should be some type of, if nothing else, specific indemnification for that type of call.
For the municipalities.
Who runs the mental health professionals, how do you know this?
That's one to Orange County.
Okay.
Yes.
So will this talk about that? Have they done any tests, have they passed, that they want to?
They did, they are. They're currently doing it. There's three teams in one town in Orange County.
Are they, the local unit, I'm saying, like, the police response, the mental health professionals don't respond to whatever calls they're receiving. In other words, taking the police out of the equation and this is a song.
There's a push for that right now and I don't think.
There's a push, but that's what I'm saying, have they got a study announced that mental health professionals, if they want to respond, is that what they have to do?
There's pieces that are out there right now. I don't know if you guys can keep this, because I'm a thousand, I'm familiar with that.
Yes.
My guys, I do, so I'm very familiar with that piece, but they're, so first of all, MHA is required once, they're not a problem, contracted by Orange County, by Mental Health Crisis Services, you know, by Orange County. With regard to the data, I don't think there's enough data out there. I think that the mental health community as a whole wants to see mental health response to these incidents, not police response, because what they can tell you, what I've heard, I was on a meeting last night, I have no one tomorrow morning about this, what they would say is that police presence is going to escalate instantly because this is a big guy in a uniform that got us here and that's kind of edge and that just escalates the tension, the stress. There may be some proof that, there probably is, but at the same time, you know, the people that are on the scene, over and above the patient, have a permanent claim, complete protection as well. Because these are unstable circumstances. Now, these can be handled through good screening on the phone and that's, and that's what I mentioned earlier in Orange County.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they have mental health professionals in the nine-one-one center taking those calls so they can do some initial screening and get the right resources there at the same time. I don't think that's enough information to guide the sort of.
What's going on?
Well, that's, that's what it's going to put down. But again, too, the way the government reform is, I mean, you have just New York State alone, Orange County alone has thirty-three different police agencies, you know? So each police agency is obviously responsible for a town and each town government is getting involved to figure out what we're doing with this situation that we're doing here. There is one, I don't know if you guys remember reading it recently, but there is one town community up near Albany that they're going to try to introduce a bill where they're getting rid of their police near Ithaca and they're, they're calling them special something where they're going to respond to different situations and handle things. That alone, hopefully, people will learn and God forbid, you're going to, it won't change until you see a tragedy, like you said. Everybody wants to storm the castle until somebody gets hurt.
Exactly.
And unfortunately, that's what it's going to take.
There's so much data, there's so much data flowing right on, serious empirical data. Minnesota has already done a show, you know, a thousand percent increase in homicides and shootings by the local police department. So much of the county council is begging, there's municipalities, there's the same officers there.
Yeah.
And this, and this is just to go back to where we were before with the defunding of police, thank you for bringing that up. This is a knee-jerk reaction to police reform that need to be put in place rather than look for the reform and look for what other ways to solve problems. They decided to defund the police, they decided you had a mass exodus, whether it be through people wanting to leave or them threatening defunding. And now, just like Clifford just said, you're in a situation now, they're looking for two hundred cops to go back there because of the spike in crime. So again, this is an area that obviously needed the police. You go ahead and you allow the group, if you will, to make the decision for the city council, they defund the police and now you see what the results are, a spike in crime and now begging other municipalities on the outside, just like just Cliff said, to come in and help them. And now they're also looking now to hire people to replace the ones that all were either outsourced or left the job because of a lack of support.
You know, police reform is great. You know, I think that we need to reform our medical profession, our education, our educational, you know, profession. You know, everything's great. Some way or another, we have to revat the wheel and figure out who put the horse before the cart. But I think we have to reform society as well, you know, reform the police.
I mean, when that comes to education, not knee-jerk reactions, you know, people need to slow the roll, sit back and do some research and do some education before everybody wants to jump on the bandwagon and do what's cool, if you will. And unfortunately, it's going on, you see it every day with, you know, cancel culture and everything like that. Somebody needs to pump the brakes and take a big look. And we're lucky here in Woodbury because we have a very good community. Like I said last meeting, we've been accredited since nineteen ninety-four and with our policies and procedures that we do in our community, we do interact with almost every other day or every day, I should say, not every other day, every day when someone's out there and we get good feedback and obviously with you guys being here, we're all on the same page and that's a good thing. And hopefully, we can educate the rest of the town through this and realize that we're ninety-nine point nine percent doing what we're supposed to be doing. And hopefully, we can just, you know, polish it, you know, a couple of Ts and dot a couple Is and we'll be good. But I think.
You might be too quick too on the mental illness calls per service. A lot of them, they don't present as like a mental illness call. It's a disorderly person, it's a mental. It's a disorderly person, it's domestic, it's the universal, and it's calls that we have to respond to. And then what is, is the disorderly person or the domestic is just a symptom of the underlying mental illness. So you're never going to be able to stop the police from dealing with mentally ill people, it's just mentally ill people commit crime. And then you're right back to, to handling that situation to go along with whatever crime they committed, so.
Sergeant Crusoe, how many, uh, calls have you responded to at the commons where you've had a shop with, shop with a call that turned into a EDP call?
Probably thirty.
If not more.
Yeah.
I mean, you're, you've been around a long time.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean.
People should understand that, you know, the, the cat stuck in a tree turns into an EDP call because the owner of the cat.
It's a symptom of the mental illness.
So, I don't know.
Maybe it would be beneficial if every department had, and this is where, you know, funding can come in, and every department has a mental health professional on set, every police department. Well, it's not.
How does she pay that, how does she pay that first?
I don't know.
Well, that's, well, except, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, I don't have that funded either, but maybe, you know.
I mean, why don't you shift? I mean, you do four because.
Well, I don't know.
On call, so I have to pay somebody, right, well, I have to pay somebody who came from vacation now, who has to get paid because they can't leave, they're on call, so I'm most certainly.
So you need more than one person, but I'm just saying, you know, you know, you're so quick to pull a line from here, you know, maybe, I don't know.
I think the better urban experiment would be to remove the police officer from the worst communities and see what happens. I think that would be the best urban experiment, remove them from the, take them away from them.
Did we just do that in the apples?
Take them away and let's see what happens and then when they call, I don't know, we'll see if we're available.
Yeah.
So we give it back and retire, you know, it might be a good urban experiment all day.
I think you're slowly seeing a little bit of that, I mean, look, look.
Oh, cops are leaving and not coming back.
Look at the homicide rate in Chicago alone, right? And they took every gun away possible, it's, um, it, it is crazy up there. Yeah, that's another topic, I think.
Yeah. Be careful with, uh, how we approach that. Um, remember, this did come from our governor, so we'll make sure that we all try to comply. Um, we're going to transition to, uh, police images and appearance. Uniform and appearance, our agency, our agency continues to require all uniformed personnel with a traditional style police uniform with a name tag and shield that are easily recognized. A uniform should convey respect and professionalism, dates back to the eighteen hundreds when the father of modern police, Sir Robert Peel, designed a uniform for officers in metropolitan police departments in England, in London. To be easily identified individuals who require police, when they require police assistance. Uh, if you look on the screen, you'll see, uh, the big guy as, uh, Egan, um, Mr. Egan prefers to go on the left as our lieutenant in his, uh, class A uniform. Um, and, uh, on the right is myself in my class A uniform and, uh, that is Officer Farabashi, um, one of our officers, who is wearing his outer vest, um, outside his traditional blue uniform. Uh, this is what you would see most of our officers, um, on a day-to-day basis inside. Um, we have refrained from a military style uniform or a BD, uh, we use a BDU style, which if, if one of us was to stand up, you would see BDU as we have extra pockets mostly to carry gear or whatever else we need. Um, as you see in the slide, as I had stated, the outer vest carrier with equipment attached, um, we allow our officers to wear their bulletproof vests as their outermost garment or their innermost garment, depending upon what's more comfortable for them. They're, they're in their uniform for eight hours at least, um, I like to try to allow them to be as comfortable as they possibly can while still looking professional. I'm wearing a bulletproof vest right now, it's on the inside, um, what you see again up there is, is an officer with it on the outside.
One of the, can I just jump in real quick?
One of the reasons why we do that as well, as some officers might have explained to people, if you know an officer, if you wear your duty belt, you're, you're literally putting on almost an extra fifteen pounds around your waist. And that, you know, between your, the magazines that hold your bullets, your gun, and you're carrying a taser, most guys are carrying two handcuffs. And over a twenty-year period, that can do some damage on your back. And most police officers usually have problems with sciatica, if anybody's ever heard that before. And so we try to do, try to be modernized, especially with the outer vest, is you can take some of this equipment off your belt and actually wear it on your vest. So some of the guys you might see, uh, remove their taser from their belt and they wear it on their vest. Their radio can go on the vest, which I forgot because I don't have a radio on me, but Chris does, that's also on your belt. Handcuffs can go on your vest, flashlight, and, um, it, it's the vest and it has what they call molly rings, well, which are, are from the military, that you can hook these things to, so we try to limit what they wear on their waist and they can just move it up to their vest. And the nice thing about that vest too is, uh, every once in a while when they're back at the station, um, if they're taking any type of report writing or anything, they can actually take that stuff off and put it to the side until they go back out on the road. So that's one nice thing about wearing the outer vest cover. You see a lot of agencies wear it, some don't, um, but, you know, Chief Police thinks it's a great thing, try to, uh, save wear and tear in their officers. I just wanted to explain that.
Um, all our full-time police officers are, are issued a traditional, uh, dress blue uniform, which again is what you see lieutenant, myself in there. We know that upon donning our uniform, there's an expectation of professionalism from our community. The, the only time that you would not see a police officer in his uniform is if, say, for example, they were gone to training. You see our officers on the way, uh, to or from training, they may be in BD style, BDU style pants or, uh, or any type of training, uh, shirt. If they are in a specialty unit, that might be the only other time that you would see them in the, in the duty. Questions? I will tell you that you saw a slide, uh, last time that had showed our shields, um, and, and we have, again, the sun badge shield, which is rather large. Most of them also have embroidered shields, so no matter what, you'll always see an embroidered shield, um, on, on a garment.
Here we do community outreach, uh, some of the things we do in the community on the slides up there, the top left, uh, you, you know, they do Spartan Race at West Point or at Lake Frederick. Um, we usually send a bunch of guys up there, um, to do some community policing. Top right is, um, our instructors for RAD, which stands for rape, uh, and.
Rape progression or any defense?
Defense. And they're, uh, with high school students, they're teaching them that, um, we also put that on at the police station once in a while. Unfortunately, COVID kind of ruined everything for that. On the bottom left, uh, you can see, uh, it's called Shop With A Hero, um, we work with the Monroe Berry School District and Target. And what they do is they apply for grants, Target being a big supporter, um, they get money, um, for, uh, families in need around the holidays and we involve ourselves in that, and our PBA also does a huge donation to match whatever is usually pretty given by Target. Um, and then the families come with the children and they get to shop, um, with a, a police officer and or firefighter, um, around the holidays to, to get a, a present or two for themselves. Um, last year, we decided to do on, on really hot days, um, uh, drive around and hand out ice pops, um, at the reservoir in the pond, um, on really hot days for children and usually we get a bunch of officers and we kind of just surprise and roll up. And, um, it's, uh, called Pop With A Cop and we hand them out and it's, it's pretty fun, kids loved it. And then obviously, which we didn't get to really do last year, um, but we usually we sponsor, uh, an event, um, what, what, uh, Trump or Treat and we'll dress up on the police cars, um, we usually do like a little zombie theme and we'll put an officer in the back of the police car behind bars there and, uh, the kids come by and they, you know, do the Trump or Treat there, it's pretty fun. But we try to get involved, um, with the community, we also do, we're getting ready to do the, um, this year, they're doing the Easter, uh, thing up at the reservoir and making it a drive-through and we sponsor that, um, for the, uh, Easter icon. And there's, there's a bunch of other things we'll get into here.
Lieutenant, if I may, uh, I don't know if everybody knows, the police department was also instrumental in responding to approximately a hundred birthdays during COVID.
I was just going to say.
Yes.
Fire department and, uh, state police, and I know what happened, so, I mean, that's something that, that we.
Thank you for bringing that up, yes.
Might as well.
Perfect. Community outreach has been significant focus for our agency over the past several years, bringing officers in the community together for positive interactions that have designed to build trust and mutual respect. Our agency has known a significant improvement in community relationships and our ability to work together on issues facing our city. Some of the things we do, um, like I said, that others that I just mentioned, uh, especially the birthday things too, um, was coffee with a cop. Uh, we did do the birthday parades, uh, we also did, um, we sponsored with the fire department this year, we did our first holiday parade, um, where the, the officers drove around with the fire department, bringing Santa, um, through the developments and handing out treats to the kids and stuff. And that was the first time we did that, which was pretty good. Uh, Trump or Treat, uh, Hispanic Outreach Program, uh, Civilian Police Academy, Rape Progression and Defense, RAD, uh, community meetings, child passenger safety, um, for community members that need to come down and, and have child seats installed in their cars for, for new babies. And, uh, we also involved the, the two local churches for feeding the hungry. So those are some of the things that we do, amongst others, not everything is written down, but, uh, our PBA is a, is a huge community, um, related event. They'll have a sponsoring baseball team, little league teams, and then the PD itself also, uh, we try to get out there and do as much as we can um, to let people know that we are here. One of the other things that we do, we implemented, uh, last year, well, toward nineteen, I think is when we started it, um, as a school resource officer. We've had, um, a school resource officer in the high school for, for quite a long time, for many, many years. And the, uh, chief and the school got together, um, in, in the end of eighteen and we made it happen in nineteen, I think, correct? For the school year and, uh, we put a SRO in every school, um, so we hired some part-time officers, um, and they got certified as school resource officers and we currently provide six school resource officers to Monroe Berry School District, where we cover the Central Valley Elementary School, Smithville Elementary School, the middle school and the high school. And Monroe also got on and they do the two schools in their district as well, um, the three schools in their district, I'm sorry. But the one main thing, I know you always hear, um, around the United States and then the other parts of the county, um, that they have cops in school, cops in school for safety, um, which is needed, I'm not going to deny that. But the one thing that, that we are proud of is that every officer that is in our school, as well as the, the three in Monroe, they're actually school resource officers, we sent them to school resource training, um, and they're there for that main, that main purpose. Um, they're not part of the general security team, um, they provide immediate response to any type of hostile event, threat, um, that's what they're there for. You know, that's, that's the main thing the SRO is there for. Uh, but it serves as a deterrent to criminal activity, function as a conduit of information between the school and the community, a resource for all the students and the staff. And out there, we'd like to believe that some of the school resource officers are mentors to the students, you know, especially the little ones. Um, you know, when they get to high school, we all know what high school kids are like, but the little ones, they're, they're great, you know, they're, they're met every day. Um, the SROs go outside to the school buses, greet them as they come off the bus, um, one of our school resource officers has like a little song he does with them and the little kids love them, they, they, they love the school resource officers and it's a, it's a good thing. And again, the officers also have a pretty good rapport with the staff as well. Anybody have any questions on the SROs or the SRO program or how it works? Everybody good? All right, one of the last things I want to talk about tonight, some of the partnerships and programs. Now, we all touched base over the last five, ten minutes of a lot of the partnerships and programs that we do have. But we do have a pretty good working relationship with the Monroe Berry School District, the Woodbury Recreation and Parks. Anytime there's an event, a major event for the public, you know, the, um, Parks Department Officer, uh, George Zaro, uh, he runs the Parks Department. He would give me a call or call the chief, hey, listen, we have a police officer for this thing we got going on up here, we have a police officer for that thing we got going on up here. Absolutely, absolutely, we'll send him up there, uh, depending on how big it is, sometimes we'll send two. But we have a great relationship with them, Woodbury DPW, the Water and Sewer Department, the Fire Department. Uh, we have a very long history with the Fire Department, doing things together. The Senior Center, uh, we recently, we talked about, uh, we just got involved with Hope Not Handcuffs, which is a great program. We just recently got involved with Fearless, which is a program that's run through Safe Halls in Orange County, uh, for domestic violence. Uh, we do a thing here in Woodbury called Operation Concern, all right, has anybody familiar with that, does anybody familiar? Operation Concern is if you, uh, or your family has a loved one that lives in town that is a senior and they live alone, you can register them where they will call into the police department every morning, just let us know that they're okay and no problem. If you don't hear from them by a certain time, we'll send an officer to their house to check on them. And, uh, a couple of years back, um, the morning dispatchers ended up getting such a rapport with the people that we have on there that we decided to think it was a step further around the holidays, again, before COVID, hopefully we can get back. Um, we ended up having all of the, um, seniors that are on our Operation Concern, we sent them officer to their house, picked them up, brought them to the station and we had a big, uh, uh, holiday breakfast for them. So, you know, we got to get them down, they, you know, they feel important, we could chit chat it, they met all the officers. It's a great thing we do and, um, a couple of times it has served a purpose when we didn't hear from them, um, over the years that I've been there, a couple of times we went there and they had fallen, they couldn't get up, they couldn't get to the phone. And, uh, thank God, things worked out great, but it is a huge thing that we do for anybody out in, in, in the land there. If they want to get further instruction on that, feel free to call the police department and just ask to talk to somebody about Operation Concern. Alcohol and Drug Abuse Council, EDAC, the NISCHF, Orange County Stop DWI, um, we're going to have a good rapport with the Sheriff's Park and the Sheriff's Office, the DA's office, New York State Police, New York State Rural, Mental Health, Department of Mental Health, Orange County probation, Interfaith Association, Access, Support and Living, and then the Monroe Woodbury Community Coalition, uh, which they usually have a, now it's virtual. They have a meeting once a month that we send Sergeant Crusoe or Officer Taus to and they work on that hand in hand. Um, so those are, are, are the things that I can think of, our partnership programs that we have here at the Woodbury Police Department and, uh, we work pretty well with everybody. And, uh, if anybody has that many, any questions on that, um, again, I, I would just like to touch base again on what Clifford was talking about earlier, especially about pumping the brakes and sit back and, and let things play out a little bit, um, before we move forward. This is a great way to look at things. And that's one of the reasons why we're doing what we're doing now, as, as we spoke earlier, the first week when we started, this initiative, um, came out in August, if I'm not mistaken, last year, uh, or the end of July. And, and obviously face value, we know what it's detailing, we know what it's about, we all know why we're here. And we wanted to, to sit back and take a breath and look at this thing from the big picture so we can make sure that we're doing it right. And we're getting out in front of it, getting you guys involved and making the best decision for all the people out there here in Woodbury. And that's why we pump the brakes, let's, let's see what other people are doing, let's take a breath and try to dive into this as a great community here and figure out which way we're going with it. And again, being one-sided, I think from our, or if you, we're doing a good job, we're doing a great job. We have a great administration, we're accredited, we're, we're that much farther ahead than where we need to be. And I think by the time that we're done with this, the next meeting and then the fourth meeting, then we're going to be able to present some to the board where we can say, hey, we're good to go, this is what we got, this is what we're looking at, let's move forward. And then we can meet once or twice a year to make sure that we stay on the board. And I appreciate your guys' time, everybody.
Twenty years ago, I'll let you forget this, when we had vacation and somebody told me, oh, please call, I'll check your house.
Yeah, it's another thing.
So, Sergeant Crusoe. So, I said, Sheriff, I'll perform, all of the motions. When I got home, they were, in fact, prior to being the chief, came to my house, there were twenty different apps on that app, every aggression. I was a little nervous because the door seemed to be open, the screen door that I had to leave, the police department. And they said, I'm going to come to your house on every tour.
Three times a day?
And I was on for eight days. They were twenty-four to that I was going away, and that should be a service. And I don't make people realize the service is available, that it's actually being done.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't make people realize what this community has and what this is on, you know, the traditional side of the way.
Yeah, if you get a chance, especially the public, if you happen to go on our website, it lists all the services that we do, that being included one of them. And sometimes it's a little overwhelming because I think people realize this, and then you meet somebody like, oh, I didn't know. Like, a couple of years here, should be able to listen about Operation Concern, about the service that we provide. And there's a list of many different services that we do provide. And feel free to jump on that, check it out, and thank you for that. No, that makes me feel good. Especially knowing that guys are out there making sure that they're doing that three times a tour. But it is, it's something that we do provide. One of the few agencies that still do that. Most of our programs are slow, and I would probably say, probably say so.
All right, I think you're right, Chief.
With that, we're going to wrap up part two. Appreciate everybody coming again tonight. We're going to try to roll out part three, you guys and Reeve, and again, I think everybody is coming and look forward to seeing part three. Start?